Fast test. Yeah, we'll get you.
All right, we'll call to order the business session of the March eighth, twenty twenty three Cottonwood City Planning Commission. Welcome, everyone. Thanks for coming out tonight. We're gonna start with general public comment. So this is, if you have a public comment that you would like to give that is not related to the business item on the agenda. So anything other than the business item regarding the public hearing for the daycare. But before we open general public comment, are there any expertise communications or conflict of interest that the commission needs to disclose? Okay, hearing none. We'll continue on. We do have one commissioner on Zoom online, Commissioner Ebler. Everyone else is here in person. So let's go ahead and open general public comment. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on something other than the agenda item? Okay, is there anyone online that would like to speak?
I'm not seeing any hands raised at this point, so if you're good.
Okay, seeing no one in person or online for general public comment, we'll go ahead and close that section and move on to our business item tonight. Project CUP twenty three zero zero two, a public hearing and possible action on a request from Catty. It's a Catty or Kathy? Catty. Catty Sanchez to operate a home daycare at fifteen forty two east sixty six seventy south. So we'll first hear from staff on this item, and then we will hear from the applicant. And then we will open it up to public hearing after the applicant has had their chance to speak.
Can you all hear me all right? Okay. Looks like I'm on the screen. So I will just go through the same presentation that I went through in work session for the members of the public who weren't able to be there. This is the only item we have tonight. Make sure I'm able to move slides. Okay. Yeah, yeah. So this application is a conditional use permit application for a home daycare at fifteen forty two east sixty six seventy south. Just a little bit of info. The conditional use application is to operate a home daycare for up to twelve children. The applicant is Catty Sanchez. I believe she's here tonight along with the owner of the property, who's her son. And then staff is recommending approval, but we'll go through the presentation first and then list the conditions of that later. I want that. Okay, so here are some context maps to kind of illustrate where this property is located. The map on the left is just the immediate vicinity. So you've got the cross streets and then the surrounding homes. You can see that I two fifteen is just on the north side there. So it's on the far northwest side of the of the city. And then the wide view was just pulled from Google Maps. That arrow just points to kind of where that very small on the map, but where the home is located. It's north of Fort Union. The street that it's on kind of curves up from Fort Union. It intersects with Fort Union by Whole Foods Market, and then it kind of curves up into the neighborhood and back down, and it connects with, I believe it's thirteen hundred east there. So it's kind of a long street that connects those neighborhoods to to the main arterials. And then just some context on the property. The zone that it's within is R one eight single family, which most of the city is zone. So if you look at a zoning map, that's mostly what you see throughout the city. It's just under a fifth of an acre, and that picture there was just pulled from Google Street View. Just shows the house, the most recent picture they had. I believe it was last summer. So the only difference on that image that that I know of is that the fences have been upgraded to vinyl fencing around the backyard.
I keep springing back to home. Can we have members of the community and audience stay, hold their... Just, be quiet, please.
So just a summary of the proposal. This business would be a home daycare for children, so the applicant would reside in the house. This would just be a home occupation. The applicant's proposing business hours of seven thirty AM to five thirty PM. And the owner and the sole supplemental employee of the business both reside at the address. We got proof of residency from the owner. I don't recall if we got it from the supplemental employee, but it wouldn't necessarily matter. They would still be allowed an employee from outside the home as part of this permit. But the other employee does reside at the address. The applicant does intend to enroll to enroll up to twelve children after approval, which is the maximum they're allowed. And they intend to utilize the east side and immediate rear yard as a play area and the driveway as a parking drop off area. And that's shown on the site plan that the applicant drew on the next slide. You can see they've kind of illustrated the the blue is the play area, which I believe is fenced off in their backyard. And then the boxes labeled one, two, three, and four would be the parking spaces. Parking areas one and two would be within the garage, so that would be for the residents to use as their required spaces. And then stalls three and four is what the applicants are proposing as a pickup drop off area. They're only required to reserve one onsite parking space other than the two that they need for residency. But they have two other stalls listed here, so they kind of exceed that requirement. And then we did receive four separate public comments by noon on Tuesday yesterday. They were forwarded to you. I believe you've had a chance to look over them. All four were in opposition, and there were some common concerns like increased traffic, fear of creating a new precedent by approving this, and then also the noise levels coming from the daycare. I would guess the yard. So like I said earlier, we do recommend approval with the following conditions. I'll just run through those really quickly. The applicant needs to obtain and maintain an approved license with Cottonwood Heights that has to be renewed yearly. And they also must have their customers use the provided off street parking. They can't rely on any on street parking, and they need to be made aware of those of those restrictions. There was some discussion in the work session about that. So if you'd like to visit that item, totally welcome to. Approval of the home occupation is subject to review upon complaint. So if the city's made aware that the applicant is not following any of the conditions, that's something that the city can look into. And any signage must comply with the city code. I believe the only signage there allowed is a nameplate sign, which is just a small, like something on the door or near a doorbell indicating that this is the daycare. So someone isn't just walking up to a random house and dropping their children off. That wouldn't be good. There's no more than one non resident employee permitted at the business. They're not proposing any non resident employee at the time this time. And there may be a maximum of twelve children on the premises at any time, including their own children under the age of six and not yet in full day school. And that's just for that requirement is just for their own children, not for the the others that they intend to intend to sit, I guess. So those are the conditions that we propose. Here are a couple model motions. For approval, if you do decide to approve, that's the language we recommend using. If there's any other conditions, there were some that you discussed in the work session, just be sure to include that in your motion. And then if you decide to deny the application, list the valid findings for denial as well. I think that's all I have. So if you have any questions for me at this time?
I think the only question I would have is what Mike had discussed in regards to conditional use permits within the city. Mike, could you be able to cover what you discussed in the business meeting in regards to conditional use permits and the acceptability of those in the community?
Sure, in terms of the of the authority and what can and cannot be done, sure. So for the benefit of those in attendance, a home occupation is considered a conditional use in the city ordinance. It's not a new zoning. It's not. It's not a new law. It's not an exception to anything that's in the code. It's it's an allowed use, and it's allowed in every single residential zone. So so this application is a home daycare, which is a type of home business. Home businesses are labeled as conditional uses, so allowed in every single residential zone or residential property in the city. The conditional use element of it does require a public hearing for a daycare or preschool like this. And and the city is dictated from the state code, from the state of Utah, its authority in regards to conditional uses. And what that says is conditional uses are entitled to approval. They shall be approved. However, if there are any potential impacts that the land use authority, in this case, the planning commission sees a conditional use creating, the planning commission can implement conditions of approval. And and conditions of approval are things are reasonable requirements that can be imposed that the planning commission finds will offset or mitigate or alleviate a potential impact of the proposed use. So I'll just run through that really quickly. A home daycare is a conditional use. Conditional uses are allowed in Cottonwood Heights in every single residential property. Some require application process and public hearing, and the planning commission's authority is not necessarily to outright deny it. It is to analyze the impacts of the use that are that are anticipated and implement reasonable conditions that would offset the impact of that. Only in the case where there is no reasonable condition that can be imposed to offset an impact can a conditional use be denied. And I will say of all the conditional uses that the city's ever considered, very, very few have been denied just because of how the state code is set up to allow these. Is that clear? Any other clarifications?
And just one one other thing is that it that it's coming before us because of the number of children that are being proposed, right? If it were six, I just want to make sure everyone hears that. So if it were six or less, it would not even be have to go through this process, right?
Yes, good, good question. So home daycares or preschools of six or fewer children are allowed just as permitted uses. And what happens in those cases is they get a business license. That business license is reviewed by the fire department, the health department, city staff. They also have to get a state business license. So these will all go through the state review process regardless of number of children. If it's six or fewer, those are just allowed, and neighbors get a courtesy notice saying, hey, just FYI, this was approved. When it's above six and no more than twelve, then it has to go through this public hearing process, but everything else is the same.
Thanks.
Mike, one one more quick question?
Yes, sir.
So we talked about this in the work session, but just in case there's new participants in the in the work meeting or this meeting, the the in the history of Cottonwood Heights, or I think it was stated there was only one denial, and it was just because the applicant had not provided the requested information. Is that correct?
Specific to home daycare applications?
Yes.
Yeah, so I will clarify, this is my best recollection, but but we did analyze this at one point and not too long ago that I can recall in doing that research, numerous home daycares have been approved, probably fifteen fifteen to twenty or so. I don't have the exact number. One was denied, and that was because at the time the planning commission had asked for some information to to help alleviate a potential impact of that daycare. And the applicant, meeting after meeting, did not respond and did not provide that information. So after numerous meetings of of an unresponsive applicant, that application was denied.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Any further questions for staff before we invite the applicant? All right, would the applicant like to speak? You can just state your name.
Carlos Sanchez.
Do you have anything to add to the staff report?
Let's see, so the requirement, I know there was a lot of questions about parking and and drop off and pickups. To address one of the questions you guys had, parents go in and do check in. They have to sign the document when they drop off and they pick up, so there will not be any kids like running on the streets or anything. They would be in the house. So that would not be an issue. Second thing is, this is not like a preschool that has an afternoon and a morning session. And there's not a specific time for people to drop off. I know you guys were had different thoughts about staggered drop offs and pickups. In relation to that, I don't see any issues. Usually there's never, there's never, you would think that everybody goes to work at eight and then, you know, come back at five, but it's not the case. And parents use the service for different reasons. A lot of them are like self employed or things like that, and so they might just use it for doing some meetings, and it might not be the full time, so it might just be throughout the day. So it's not a a set specific time for pickups or drop ups. So I wanted to address that as well. Let's see, in relation to noise. The use of the backyard will not be extensive, if any, during the summer months. Would probably be an hour if that, just because, you know, it's just too sunny, and you don't want the kids to be out there. But I don't think it would be any louder than, you know, having a dog in a backyard, wouldn't it? So I don't foresee that to be any issues or a family of, you know, a couple of kids. Kids are, I mean, they did, they can be loud kids, but I think it's not anything that is, it's not after hours, and it's not like, like very loud. So I don't foresee that being an issue. The fencing has been replaced. It's high enough, and it covers, you know, all the view inside. The thought that we have is to put grass in the back. Currently, it's not. So that will be work that we would do later on to clean all that up and do the irrigation and everything in it. So I don't know if you guys have any other questions on on the business, the operation of it. I don't know, anything you guys have?
I have a question. I'm noticing in one of the photographs of the property, there's a for sale sign on the property. How long have you lived there now, Mr. Sanchez?
The property was acquired at the end of December.
So not too long, but not that that's all that relevant, but thank you.
Well, I I bought it. I fixed it. So I've actually owned it since April.
Okay.
But then I I got a loan to fix it, and then I got a different loan just to actually keep it.
So it's basically been your home for almost a year now?
Yeah, but I mean, during construction, you know, not gonna live there. It's to repair, to make all the changes, and then the end of December is when the acquisition was. My thought was potentially sell it, and so I had a friend of mine listed. But there's not a lot of traction at that point, and so I decided just to keep it.
Would just like to remind the commission that only the applicant needs to live at the property. I believe Mr. Sanchez is speaking on behalf of Catty Sanchez.
Yeah.
So we have the owner's consent for the application to take place, but it's just the the actual business applicant or owner of the business that does need to reside there. Just want to clarify that for the code.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Yes, so one of the concerns we've talked about is with the number of cars. And if you And if you, I it may or may not be that there are several cars there at once. Um, and if there's two spots for people to park out, what ha- what happens when there's four? Cars, because it's, we're specifically saying one of the conditions is that. There can't, it it they can only utilize that space um in the driveway. Um, just there's, I guess, there's, that's a real concern. Because of the fact that you don't want all these cars piling up and and causing a lot of impact um in terms of traffic.
So at the moment of um signing a contract to uh take care of a kid. You um specifically assigned a time for them to be dropped off and picked up. They sometimes, you know, traffic and whatnot maybe extend the the pickup. But you, or the the drop off, but they have a specific time for them to to do that. I don't foresee that being an issue, based on the number of people that then that would be going to daycare. I mean, I'm not gonna say it's it's not gonna happen because it is impossible to to assume that. If you, if I have the house and I have a a party, then I'm gonna have a multiple cars in the street, and I understand this is a different situation, but. It's it's next to impossible to to prevent that, but if you give them the specific timeframes, I don't foresee that being any issue at all.
So the plan is to provide um the families a specific time that they drop off and then to stagger that so that um. So that, so that they know this is their time and and. To alleviate this issue, I think it's a big concern, I mean.
Yeah, it is, it is, I understand that, and the the way that it's worked is you, you have that specific time in the contract. Because you're you're agreeing to the specific days of the week and the time that you're taking care of the 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 child. And so you have a specific drop off and pickup set there. Uh, the parents are agreeing to pay for a specific time window of time that you're you're agreeing to, and so that is the the way that that is.
That is the plan, I mean, I understand that, this is.
Right.
Okay. Um, since I have the mic, um, what is the age range of the children that you? Will have in the daycare?
So the daycare, we adhere to state regulations, state regulations allow uh two babies under two. Per adult. And then they have the specific number over two, but we wouldn't do, we're not doing a preschool, so once they 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 get to preschool age, then they move on. Um. That that's basically the the ages that we that we're doing, so once they get to four, then then they would be going somewhere else.
Can you explain that point? So you are, you are going to um have kids under uh twenty-four months there?
Yes, yes, uh, the state allows two babies per adult, that's the ratio that they allow.
The ratio is one to four under two.
Right, but we we choose to stay, because, I mean, I think taking care of a baby is a big task. And so we are going to save just two babies per one adult. Did that answer your question?
And so if you have, if you end up signing up or having a contract with a family that has. Two babies, then that would limit the total number that you could take on, based on this daycare only being allowed to have two employees. Because of the.
Right, and the state has those restrictions, and we can't do anything without the state going to the house and and. They measure everything, they they evaluate the house and they tell you how much you can actually do. And i- it might be a number smaller than what we're getting here. It it just depends on what the state feels, it would be a safe number for us to be able to take care of.
Well, it is a, it is a less number, you can, you can do, you can do twelve. Um. Depending on the age, but like the minute, the minute that you have under, under two years old. You can't do twelve at all because it's a, it's a four to one ratio. Or it's a one to four.
Right, yeah, like I said, that the the number would be stated by by the. I think it's the Department of Health, if I'm not uh incorrect on that, and they will be able to to tell us, okay, um. What can you do? And then obviously we'll look at it from the profit perspective. I obviously babies are are uh, they cost more. So, you know, that would also occur into consideration, yeah, we might be able to have less kids, but. The babies, you know, bring in more money, so that'll be a business decision that we would have to decide, once they tell us what we can and can't do.
So you would like to have the flexibility of going up to twelve, but you may have quite a few less than twelve?
Yeah, it all depends on on what they tell us, and I I we have to adhere to what the state says, we. The state does, I believe, is two visits a year and then one is a surprise. So like you cannot just, you know, take as many kids as you want, because they will just show up and you'll have issues, so.
Well, it's, yeah, but the if 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 the intent of the business is to take to take under, under twenty-four months, I. The regulations I'm looking at, um, birth to twelve or thirteen to twenty-four months, maximum group size is eight. So if there's no flexibility, like the minute you take two years old, your max is eight, not twelve.
Right, I'm applying for this because this this application, I believe it goes up to, we don't need to uh have this meeting if we had under six. And so the reason we applied for this is to have the option. Once we meet with the state, the state decides what how many we, how many we can do, then we'll make the business decision of. What ages are we gonna be catering towards, but uh to this point, we're just doing this as an option. And we'll decide once the state tells us how many we can do.
No, I mean, understood, but I mean, if the application has specifics in it and the intent of the the businesses to. To cater under, under twenty-four months, it's it's a, it's a different calculation. Not not just for the state, but also for us, because we can put conditions on it.
Okay, do you have a specific conditions for for babies that that would be different from toddlers?
No, I I I I mean, like it would just adhere to, it 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 would adhere to to state regulations, but.
Yeah.
You know, because, because I, you know, we're hearing. Um, a a certain narrative, like in in our deliberations, we we may decide to do something or just kick it to the state or the staff, I don't know. This is, we're, it's just a deliberation to figure out what the intent is, um, so that we have information points to make determinations on conditions.
Yeah, uh, so I mean. I I believe that the decision will come down to how many, if we're allowed to this license and if we're allowed to this license, and then we'll. We'll make the decision, I mean, at this point, we don't have any any kids, and so we we would have to see what comes in. If we have all babies, then we'll just have all babies and it will only be, you know, four. But if that's not the case and we have a couple more kids, then that will be different, uh, we don't know who's. Who's gonna use our business, patronize our business, so at this point, we're just opening it up to have the best stability for us to make a decision at that point.
Well.
I can clarify the, just the the backend process of licensing these, if that would be helpful to the.
Yeah, it would be, actually.
Okay, thanks, um, so so in addition to the conditional use permit. Any home daycare has to go through the business licensing process, and that requires getting a state, a Utah state license. As well as a Cottonwood Heights city license. So the state review of this would be part of that business license process, and if the state comes in and says. Based on your employees, which are limited for the conditional use permit and how many employees can be here, up to non, one non-resident employee. Based on the the staffing that's allowed, you're allowed to have up to this many kids of of the certain ages. So the state would weigh in and 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 they need to provide a copy of the state license for us to issue the local license. Additionally, the the city license is sent to the fire department and to the Salt Lake County Health Department. For their review before a license is issued by the city. So so this is looked at by the state and by the health department and by the fire department before any license is issued, and that's true whether it's. One kid or two or six or twelve, and and I think. What this conditional use allows is up to twelve, it doesn't allow only twelve, it's just up to twelve. Um, if if they didn't go through this process, it's only a maximum of six.
Thank you, Mike. Any other questions, Commissioner Ebbler?
No, I I I'm just, you know, I just. Kind of raising the concerns based upon the ratios and based upon maximum group size on on and then also on the staff. Um. I. Or the 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 employee, um, rate. The limit of one additional employee, it it just, it creates a conflict depending on what the mix of the kids are, so I'm just trying to reconcile that.
Okay.
I appreciate it.
Any other questions from the commission for the applicant?
Do you have children now residing there of your own or your family?
Yes, I have two daughters.
Two daughters, and how old are they?
Seven and two.
Okay. Thank you.
Would would they be, would they be um? Part of the the calculation in terms of they would be participating in in the business?
That is part of the calculation you guys uh provided.
Okay.
Yeah, the seven-year-old is not though, she's in first grade, she goes away all day.
Yeah, so so city code states the two-year-old, because they're not in full day school, would be required to count towards the maximum, the seven-year-old would not.
Yeah, it 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 just gets tricky really fast, because they they have, it's not just like the ratios and the maximum group size, they also have like these. Overlays that say like, you know, fifty percent is 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 a certain group. That's the ratio that gets used, not not, you know, the maximum or the mix or or whatnot, so. Just trying to figure it out.
Want to comment on that, or?
Uh, no, no, I think, um, so. I had a, so are you, you're aware of all these ratios and the state process and everything, and you're willing to comply with with all of that? Um, and. Would you be willing to write up a formal drop off and pickup? Plan, sort of like what we shared in the work session, that just states what what you're. How you're going to mitigate the traffic concerns of some of the neighborhood, so we're avoiding having more than just two drop offs at a time.
Yeah, that would not be an issue.
Uh, and have you started any of the inspection process, like with the health department or the? Or the state or any of that, or are you doing this first and then you start that?
So you get this license, and once you do that, then the state will come and and visit the house, it'll take measurements of the areas that we're working with. And then they'll make decisions on on allocation of kids and you need to uh, they'll add you to the state registry of daycares. Lack of better word, and they will um kind of advertise you and tell people that are in need where to find you.
All right, any other questions for the applicant? All right, thank you for your time and input, we'll let you know if any other questions come up.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's go ahead and open uh the public comment, did we, did? Did we fill out the comment cards today? It just helps me with the name, but we don't have have to, if um.
The staff didn't receive any of the comment cards, so if you, if you do want to open it up for how you typically do with kind of walk-ins.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine, so just state your name. Um, for the record, and then uh as you approach, and remember to speak into the mic so that we can have it on record. So um, anyone who would like to speak on this item, please um approach.
And then I'll just also note, um, Maria is gonna start a timer for three minutes, so you will hear a beep, don't be alarmed if that goes off, but limit your comments to three minutes. Photos I'd like to show you all.
I'm short, so I have to move, but I hope you can see me. Hello, I am Dr. Lael Echols, and our family owns the home directly behind the proposed daycare site. We share about eighty feet of fence line on the south side of the property. I am speaking for a coalition of neighbors listed here, some of whom have lived in our neighborhood for forty-plus years. We are all firmly opposed to the granting of this permit. To start with the obvious, the applicant does not reside on the premises. The home has been vacant since it was purchased last year. There are no curtains on the windows and the driveway and sidewalk are never shoveled. Not even when we got fifteen-plus inches of snow a couple of weeks ago. Catty Sanchez also owns a registered home daycare, Little Treasures located in Harriman. She can't possibly live in two places at the same time. I was given this, when I came up, there was an inspection done at Little Treasures in Harriman, there were violations, there were more children on site than what were allowed. I have that if you'd like to see it. I have a list of concerns that we've all put together here that I have on the sheet that I have passed out to you. Um, the proposal shows four off-street parking spaces, two of these are enclosed in the garage. It is our opinion that two spaces is not enough to run this business. I'm a veterinarian, you can never be sure when people are gonna show up. Sometimes it's half an hour early, sometimes it's two hours late. Sixty-six seventy is a through street, it's heavily traveled and folks often speed, this is a serious safety hazard. Has a traffic study been done? What will be the traffic impact of this business? The house was purchased last May to flip the home. The market crashed and they couldn't sell it. Has the owner obtained the proper permits for the extensive renovations that have been done? Including enclosing a carport into a garage? And removing the back deck and replacing it with a simple six-step staircase, I've shown a picture of that, it's dangerous. Has the building safety inspection been done? The back steps are an obvious code violation. Has the home been inspected for drug residue? The previous owner had a history of illegal drug use. I have a police report, uh, I can give you the name, it was my husband and I that were involved with some vandalism that was happened while this person was on drugs. I have also been told the home was used to manufacture drugs before we bought our home. Some of the older members of our community can comment on that. There is not an adequate right-of-way, which needs to be eight feet in front of the home. The home is not ADA compliant. There is a children's bus stop on the corner of sixty-six seventy south and fifteen sixty east. This represents a significant safety hazard during school pickup and drop off. There's a main street drain directly in front of the house, water runs very heavily at certain times through the gutter in front of the home. Having twelve children in the yard, oh. May I finish my?
Yeah, you can keep going, just for, just finish the last one, yeah.
Children are noisy, especially in large groups, our neighborhood is quiet and peaceful, the presence of twelve children outside the home would significantly interfere. With our right to quiet enjoyment of our homes. Please help us keep our community safe and quiet and deny this application.
Thank you for your comment. Would anyone else like to speak on this item?
Hi, my name's Kim Haryuchi, and I live three houses down from from this this house. There are two houses in between our house and this house, and um I agree with all of the points that have been made. Um, I hope you have a written copy of this, because I think there are some good points here. I also emailed a comment, my um comment primarily focus focuses around transportation, but I think there are some. Better points here to be considered, and I would just add that um. Um, just because you haven't denied a conditional use permit like this doesn't mean that you can't deny one, because. Why have the process if denial isn't an option? I think there are some very good points here in favor of denial, and I would urge you to deny this this permit. Um, also take into consideration that our neighborhood is bordered by four busy streets on all sides. I two fifteen, thirteen hundred east, Highland Drive and Fort Union Boulevard. To bring that traffic into the neighborhood, um, is just opening a door, and luckily we've been able to. Kind of keep that traffic out as a buffer into the neighborhood, and so. By allowing a home business like this, you're bringing more traffic into the neighborhood. And I think probably the best point is that um this is a residential property. Um, and if the homeowner is not living in on-site, it is not a home but a business. So please, please deny this, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else like to provide? Any public comment on this?
Hello, my name is Sophia Born Garcia, I am a resident at sixty-six ninety-nine south, fifteen thirty east. I own that house with my father. Um, I would like to oppose this, um, because we've moved into this neighborhood for our baby. She's one and a half years old, we like to keep it a residential neighborhood and not open up any more traffic into it, we'd like to keep it a safe place. Um, the residents haven't been living there. Um, I would say I, whenever a neighbor does come. Um, I would say I, whenever a neighbor does come into a home, I'll bring them bread. No one has been there since mailbox will always be full. No snow shop is shoveled like they've said, but yeah, let's, please keep this a residential neighborhood, thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Corey Nielsen, I live at fifteen eighty-three E sixty-six seventy south. The real confusion I have here, maybe you guys can have them clarify, who's going to occupy this home? We've got an applicant and then we've got the owner, who's going to run the daycare and occupy the home? That's my biggest concern because that home's vacant. And has been since it was purchased in April.
Thank you. Anyone else? Is there anyone online that? Um, wants to comment? Oh, you have another one.
Thank you for the opportunity to address you, appreciate your time, I know you guys are busy, so I'll be brief.
Can you state your name just for the record, sorry, state your name? Your name, just for the record, thank you.
I guess my question's about equity, uh, we've had several folks in our neighborhood that have asked for a variance to enclose a carport into a garage that have been denied time and time again. We can find no evidence of a permit for these people that have enclosed their carport into a garage. I'd appreciate it if you would look at that, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I just want to say about the traffic.
Sorry, can you state your name into the mic?
I'm sorry, this, I'm Rachel McVie.
Thank you.
Um, the, on sixty-six seventy south, we have the speed humps because there's so much traffic that we need, we need to get the speed humps installed. And on the others, there's other streets where that's, they're monitoring your speed is. And at least two other streets that are going to. And then that's what I really worry about is the traffic and then the streets are dark and you got school kids walking to school to the school bus. In the wintertime it's dark and that worries me a little bit.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
I don't see any hands raised on Zoom, oh yeah, Alex is pulling it up so we can see if anyone does raise their hands, who's joining through Zoom.
Marilyn Butler, sixty-seven hundred south, fifteen thirty east. Uh, we were residents at the time that the home was raided by the police because they were manufacturing meth there. And we have absolutely no idea if the home is worthy to have children in it, thank you.
Thank you. Right, any other public comment? Seeing none, um. Do we have a motion to close the public comment?
Move to close the public comment?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we've closed the public comment on this item, let's move to uh, commission discussion.
Just for clarification, because there seems to be some concern and maybe some confusion. Um, the owner of the property is not required to live there, correct?
The, the business has to be run by someone who resides in the property, correct, yeah.
But the own, but that does not have to be the owner of the home, correct?
Yes.
They need to give their permission for the business to, excuse me, for the business to take, to, to be there, right?
Right, and, and I just, I've stated this in the work session, but they, they did provide proof of residency for, for Catty Sanchez, which was just in the form of, of insurance documents. Um, you know, if there's additional proof that the planning commission requests, certainly that can be asked for um, to address some of the concerns heard, but yeah, you are accurate, it has to be the person that resides there, they don't necessarily need to own the home.
Thank you.
Mike, is the, uh, is the application done under penalty of perjury?
Well. That, that's a good legal question, um, that I don't, I don't know the answer to right off the top of my head, Shane is, he is here, Shane is here, he may be able to answer that, but uh, if, if it's found to be, if there's any inaccuracies here, then, then the whole thing is subject to revocation or not even being issued in the first place.
I, I, I mean, I, I, I was, I. In the, in the work session, I, I had one, you know, one opinion, but after hearing some of the public comments and especially in terms of the residency guy arguments. It, it, it raises some concerns. I, you know, a lot of the comments are, are considered, but the residency thing absolutely is something that, that is under our purview.
So uh, just at a SAP level, as I was listening. Some additional conditions that, that may be recommended would be, uh, you know, some additional forms of proof of residency, some sort of additional verification. Um, staff could follow up with the health department on the, the, the drug history, if there was a, a, any sort of police presence on this site, that would all be documented. Typically those homes are condemned until they're, they're properly um, restored, um, so, so there should be public record for that. Um, in regards to the, the building construction activity, I, I do not see any permits in the city system, so we can look at that. If there's a concern of that tied to the use of the daycare.
Yeah, yeah.
Like a walkthrough inspection by the building department or something else.
I, I, I did the same thing, a, as I heard the comments, I, I, I pulled the permit history and came to the same conclusion, I, you know, it, the biggest concern I have is, is that, you know, the last essentially property has been purchased, if there's no evidence that residency is actually there. Um, eh, this, this becomes a hard approval. But yeah, I mean, there, there's ways to mitigate this clearly, but um. I'm, I'm happy to hear uh, what, what the other commissioners have to say on, on this point.
I would agree with you, I would put some type of provision in regards to either having rental contracts, um. Property tax notice or court documents or bank statements so it identify, uh, and potentially a driver's license as well. Um, just from a resident standpoint.
Yeah, I mean, like even, even the Cottonwood Heights Rec Center provide or ask for like a little bit more information than that, so. I, I, I mean, I just want to, I, I mean, like the, the first speaker I thought brought up some really, really good points on the residency of like not just that this, the snow's not shoveled, which is a really good indication that, that no one's home. But you know, that there, there's another, I, I daycare being run i- in another jurisdiction, I mean, that's really alarming and concerning.
Yeah, I think it's a very productive conversation that y'all are having, um, where there's not a strict guidance for us, a staff in the code of what constitutes proof of residency? If that's a condition that you all are wanting to consider, I would just ask that you provide some specificity for what that would be in your opinions.
Can I just clarify one thing here? If the applicant the business owner does not reside at any time even after this is granted at the residence, there is no conditional use granted.
Right.
In other words, if they, if they live there, and they could prove they lived there tomorrow. But six days from then, they did not live there any longer. There is no conditional use that carries with the property. The conditional use is only granted to the business owner who applied for it.
That's a good question, i- if I, I believe they do apply to the property, but under the condition that you have to reside on the property to run the business, and if you don't then you don't meet that, that code requirement, um. So whether it, it runs with the, the applicant or with the property, I don't know. But if there were clear evidence that the owner or the, the resident left, then certainly there are procedures in place to revoke business licensure. Revoke conditional use permits and, and eliminate those, um, you know, from, from city record.
So I assume if there's any question about which it runs with and, and it would be resolved, but we would, we would be wise in that case to put a condition that they must be a resident.
Yeah.
But that's.
When was the property purchased?
That's city code, I, I do believe if, if someone were to run a home business and then that person moved and the next person that moved in wanted to run the same business. We would allow that to continue, so my inclination is that it runs with the property, but under the condition that whoever lives there has to, you know, has to actually live there and be the one running the business.
I'll just mention from a procedural standpoint, what we typically see there as staff is, um. Sometimes a business type has been approved that would allow um, a new applicant to be eligible for that same business type, but they would still have to submit a new license and, and proof of compliance with their business operations, so. By that, I mean if if a different um applicant slash resident of this property came in and wanted to do this, they would have to demonstrate compliance with their own residency and business operations.
When, when was the property purchased?
I can't answer that question, but you're welcome to bring the applicant back up.
The applicant stated April.
April. Uh, of last year.
Yes.
And I will just remind the commission that the owner of the property you know, doesn't have to be the business owner, so the name of the property ownership may be different than the applicant.
There may be. Um. You know, they, they might be moving, they might be, there might be a story here that we don't understand, and I'm inclined to think that if we gave the applicant another month or a date certain to, to come back with additional proof of residence, um. That we could continue the item is where I'm thinking.
Sure, absolutely, um, I, well, the, the DMV has some good guidelines for approving residency when you go get a driver's license, so. You know, you can model any feedback off of that, it's an established process in Utah already.
If you do continue um, to another meeting, if you'll just specify what items you'd like resolved by that next meeting date, that will help us to then give that feedback. Look, the applicant is also here, but that will help us to, to have that feedback on the record.
And, and I think if we're gonna do it, we should give options because like uh, registration for vote, not everyone's registered, uh, you know. Driver's licenses, maybe they have them, maybe they don't, so if we give a plethora of, of cafeteria options and they have to satisfy some, you know, some majority of them, I think that'd probably be better.
How long would it take? Uh, I agree, Commissioner Ebler, um, how long would it take staff to look into the illegal drug use history?
Um, I, I would suggest if, if you want to look into building and, and the, you know, police enforcement records uh, giving us a little more time than April fifth, maybe the April nineteenth meeting. Um, just because I don't know how long, if we have to wait a certain amount of business days to get copies of records and health department documentation, things like that, I, I don't know. I would err on the side of a, a couple of extra weeks there.
Would that just be under the health department for meth tests?
We have to check, I, I don't know, I'd, I'd start with the police department and, and the health department would be involved, so we would need to explore that.
There also appears to be some uh concern, and it's not this body's interest at this moment, but about code violations as it relates to construction. Uh, and Mr. Butler brings up a valid point, it seems like uh, unrelated to this application because it's not really germane to the question. Uh. We ought to ask uh, the compliance officer to go and review if, if that structure was built in compliance with code.
It, it can be, it can be a comply, or it can be a condition of the, uh, the approval of the conditional use, so, so I mean, it's still under our purview.
That there could, if there's concerns that there was work done without permits that could impact the, you know, the, the building code compliance within that that residence, I think a reasonable condition would be to ask the applicant to, to pull a, you know, an, an inspection permit and pay that fee and then have a walkthrough inspection done by the city. The city will admittedly be limited in, in what it can see and it's only looking for obvious building code violations. So the quality of finish and, you know, the, the quality of amenities inside the home aren't necessarily up to, you know building code inspection, but if it, if it has code compliance, the, you know, that's something that the, the city's inspector could check.
Yeah, but Mike, I mean, if they, if they enclose something in without approvals, I, I mean, every, every municipality out there has the ability to say tear it down because we need to see it because of life safety issues.
Yeah, absolutely, I, I think if I didn't make that clear, that would be covered as part of this, we can verify that very easily if a structure was enclosed and, and take a look at that.
Yeah, I mean, we, we just, we want everyone to play by the same rules in the city.
I think that these things fall as, as I was writing down in terms of that it would be a verification of safety, which would include code compliance, the, looking at history of any kind of drug situation, I, I, I just think there's some things, I mean, we want to specifically say what they are, but I think there's a main bullet of just the verification of, of safety.
But the state is gonna do some, I, I guess I want to make sure that we're not overstepping staff's role. And with the health department and the state and all the other requirements that they're gonna have to go through.
We'd be happy to provide um, additional information on maybe some of the things that are the city's purview, like building permits. And then um, even if the extent of the information we provide is, this is the regulatory agency that would be checking this out as part of their licensure process. If it is, you know, maybe something the state looks at when they're licensing daycares, then that could be information we provide you with as well, um. But I appreciate your sensitivity to what we have local control over versus other agencies, because that is limited.
I, I do think these three items are reasonable for staff to look into as part of the CUP.
So the three items being residency and the um, drug use history or?
Yeah, and then the, the illegal permitting or construction activity, yeah.
And then maybe, I, I would like to see if, when the applicant comes back with the answers to these things. Um, the plan for drop off and
Staggered time.
A, a stated or a written up plan for pickup and drop off that staggers it. So four things, I guess.
And if you want to stick with those four things, um, you can just kind of reference that in your motion, I think, because that will be on the record. So as long as there's consensus among the commissioners on what those four items are, feel free to do your motion by reference.
It doesn't, does anyone have other questions or, or I'm happy to make a motion right now?
Uh, the only other question I had was the date certain.
That's, it's April fifth or April?
No, uh, April nineteenth, or do we just push it to May?
Uh, staff would recommend April nineteenth at the earliest to give us time to, to dig into this a little. If you want to go May, that's up to you.
Any, any preference?
If staffs is comfortable with saying April nineteenth, let's, let's, let's say April nineteenth.
I, I, I move that, that we table the motion until date certain um, planning board meeting on April nineteenth. And by that time, the applicant shall address the four conditions that we have discussed.
Alright, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Do we need to outline those four motions? I, I just want to make, we're okay, okay, thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any discussion other than that?
Um, I, I would just say, um, just in, in deference to the, to the question that the, that we incorporate the, the four conditions as, as part of the motion, or at least make sure that they're delineated.
Do you want to state those, Commissioner Ebler?
Um, I think it was uh, the, the drop off. The pickup drop off, um, the drug, um, prior drug use, the uh, uh, unpermitted um, construction and the residency. Those are the four, I believe.
I think that's correct. Any further discussion? All right, so we have a motion, second, and we added the four conditions. I'll go ahead and roll call. Commissioner Shelton?
Yes.
Lucy Anderson, Commissioner Anderson, yes.
Commissioner Ebler?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Steinman?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen, yes. All right, so we've tabled that until April nineteenth. Thank you everyone for coming out on that agenda item and for all your comments, thank you to the applicant. Um, we have two items on our consent, consent agenda. We have two items on our consent consent agenda, which are approval of the planning commission meeting minutes from January fourth, twenty twenty-three. Did we have any discussion on the January fourth minutes?
Is that the meeting I was first in attendance at?
I think you were the next.
I think I was the next one.
I move to approve the January fourth meeting minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the next agenda item is the approval of the planning commission meeting minutes from January eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. Any discussion on that?
I reviewed those minutes and the report regarding myself was not quite accurate. It was noted that I am working at the University of Utah. I have worked there in the past for a decade and a half or so, but am not currently employed by the University of Utah. So we might just make that correction.
Okay, any other items? Discussion? Hey, do we have a motion?
Motion that we approve the the minute meetings of January eighteenth with the noted correction.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right.
Move to adjourn.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.